This conference will now be recorded.
Very good. Okay, we'll call to order the meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:00 PM. We have all five regular members in attendance. And this is being for this meeting is being held pursuant to the Governor's executive orders. Application number one is going to be 1701 Stratford Avenue petition over Repasi Motor Works LLC seeking a site plan review and approval of location to establish a general repairs license in a CA/RM1 zone. And is the petitioner present? I see he is actually. Mr. Repasi.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay, why don't you walk us through your proposal?
Um, alright, um, I just want to start off by thanking everybody for taking the time tonight. This is my first appearance in any type of planning and zoning meeting, so I appreciate any patience as I may fumble through it a bit. It's also my first appearance on a Zoom meeting, so the big night for me. Nonetheless, thank you guys for being here. I'll also be representing William Pepe, my partner and colleague, in regards to his application for 24 Lines Place, the used car license. And so as I described, the building and the plans, I may go back and forth with how they'll be working together. So if there's any confusion on that, you could just stop me and I can answer any questions in regards to both addresses individually. But anyway, um, my name is James Repasi and I reside in Shelton, Connecticut. I've worked at the Porsche dealership in Ferryfield for the last 13 years. I specialize in one specific model of Porsche. And my application tonight is for a general repairs license at 1701 Stratford Avenue. What I would be doing there is just low-volume general repairs on that one specific model of car I specialize in. But like I mentioned, it's a very boutique car. Probably looking at something like five or six cars a month, you know, on the high end. In regards to the facility itself, during operations, all cars will be inside, no doors will be open, no excessive noise, no smells, all pretty general items. I actually do a lot of business with some of the surrounding businesses in that area, like the Automotive Restorations Inc. facility on Lupus Drive. There's a machine shop I use on Rachel Drive. And I think the idea of the business I'll be operating could probably be compared to the facility automotive concepts, which is right down the street. How they specialize in, you know, higher-end, you know, low-volume. And so my colleagues, so I'll be doing all the general repairs out of the 1701 address. And my colleague specializes in the auto sales side of the business. And so the building is conveniently segregated already. About 10 years ago, there was a 1,600 square foot addition put on the back of the original brick building. Never removed any of the segregating walls, so it's physically pretty much two buildings touching themselves already. So he's going to be operating a used car, you know, buying and selling out of that smaller portion. And I'll be doing my repairs in the larger portion. And the two of us, just, we've always worked together and complemented, you know, each other in what we specialize in. And so we're just going to be moving into one roof.
Okay. Questions for the gentleman?
Question from Commissioner Bacola.
Mr. Bacola, please sit, sir.
On the used car lot, how many cars are you looking to be put out there at one time?
Um, there would be no cars exterior of the building any time. All cars for sale would be indoors.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Outside of clients coming in, you know, to either inspect a car for service work or inspect a car for purchase, you know, no cars for sale or anything being advertised outside. In regards to that, one step further, any signage outside of the building would pretty much just be the absolute minimum that the Department of Transportation would require, like hours of operation and, you know, obviously a name, but no sort of sales or pricing or, you know, anything of that nature.
Okay, very good. Mr. Henrik and then Mr. Francis.
Jay, you typically have a list of requirements, you know, town requirements for these. Have they been made accessible to the applicant and are you aware of them, Mr. Repasi? We have like standard stipulations for, I guess that they pertain, I don't know if they're two separate sets, one for the auto repair, one for the car dealership.
So this is Jay Hibansky. I'll answer that first. So we have one standard set of motor vehicle conditions of approval. I made sure to attach those for the applicant's review to my staff comments. And I'll let the applicant respond to whether or not he's had an opportunity to take a beat.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. Yes, I did receive them with my notes. And yet none of those will be any problem at all. I'll be well within any of those regulations while operating this business.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Francis.
Yeah, well, that was kind of part of my question. But to, so basically, just to get a full aspect of what you're trying to do there. So the front part of that building is going to be like a showroom inside? And then the back, the rear part of it is going to be where the automotive repairs are being done?
Uh, yes, that's correct. It's actually switched. The original building is up front, so the repairs will be out front and then the sales will be out back. But essentially.
Yeah. Okay. Also, alright, so vice versa?
Yeah, that's all.
And going in regards to some of the standards that Jay was just mentioning, I see there was one where you're going to do car washing and stuff of the cars, of course, right?
Um, not so much car washing. There'll be some level of detail work and, you know, cleaning of the cars. But, you know, nothing to be said of actual, you know, car washing services of any type. Just, you know, cleaning and for photos to be taken for sales or cleaning after a service. A lot of that I may even rely on the car wash across the street for. Just because, you know, like I said, it's going to be a small operation of only a handful of guys. There won't be, you know, any sort of volume of car washes.
I just seen that there was a standard where you had to have an oil-water separator installed in there. So, hey Jay, so is that a requirement regardless? Or if he's going to wash cars?
Exactly. So this is Jay Hibansky. Some of, not all of these conditions will apply to every motor vehicle used. So that one would apply to if there were, if they were for a car wash. By state, state law, it's required to have a great oil and water separator. So it doesn't sound like the applicant is going to be running a car wash to the effect where they would, you know, be sudzing and needing to collect all the oil and stuff off of the car that you typically would get on the, while traveling on the road that a regular, you know, car wash would need. So no, I mean, if they're not washing cars there like a typical car wash that you and I would all know, then that condition would not apply. And some of these conditions might not apply.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Just a question for your, in the planning and zoning comments, there was some references to the facade of the building. And, you know, as you're aware, that in that neighborhood, we want to keep things nice for two roads and you got Pizza Co. next to you so that it is frequented by townspeople. Are there any plans to make any changes to or improvements to the facade as it is right now?
Um, outside of just maintaining the current, you know, look of the building and the landscaping around it, any sort of modifications to the building would only be, would only be made to reflect and complement the buildings around. You know, a large portion of why I wanted to move to that area is exactly for those reasons. That, you know, the Pizza Co. restaurant right next door, the brewery across the street, and then, like I said, the other buildings down the road. But yeah, maintaining the character of the neighborhood in that building is just as important to me as I'd imagine it would be to you guys.
Yeah, so if there's anything that, as it's written in the comments, if anything is rotting in the facade, this is rotting board and battening in the front of the building or anything that's peeling, we would appreciate if that could be maintained just so that it would, it is appealing to look at.
No, I agree. And that is, that's part of the plan. Shortly after, you know, purchasing the building, it's just to, you know, return it back to its original brick character. I believe 20 years or so, it was a different style to have, you know, the front fascia of the building, have that brick and border, you know, the wood from fascia. And it's deteriorated over time. It's no longer pleasant to look at. So, um, yeah, yeah, I'm definitely interested in removing that wood, you know, as soon as I can. And any other, you know, any other requests, I've got no problem with.
Okay, very good. Mr. Vigliati, do you have any questions?
No. Jim Vigliati, I, first question, are you going to do oil changes and things like that when you do, you provide your service?
Uh, yeah, yeah. At time of service, there are fluids being changed.
And what happens to the, you know, the waste fluid?
Um, so part of the DOT application is a contract with a company that provides a waste oil tank for all of that stuff to be collected in. And also contracts, including them coming in on a, you know, a monthly basis to clean out that tank and maintain that equipment.
And you said that happens once a month?
Um, I believe it's up to their discretion because the tanks that are required are, you know, it's a fairly good size for the low volume that I would, I'd be doing. I would assume like a normal dealership would probably need it about once a month. I would probably need it less frequently, but it's all part of their, you know, they're much more familiar with the laws and regulations of all that. And to sign the contract, whether it be, you know, one month or six weeks, you know, they would come in and do their job anyway. You know, that's an expense that I'll have to, you know, acquire.
And then what about consumable parts like filters and gaskets and things like that? When, if you have to replace those, does that go in a dumpster?
Yeah, anything without any hazardous chemicals or materials can just be disposed of, you know, in a normal dumpster. And then all the, all the oil filters or anything like that saturated by those chemicals would also be removed by.
I'm sorry, be removed by?
That same company that's in control of the waste oil disposal.
And you'll have a contract with a dumpster to remove, a company to come in?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so then looking at the floor plan, I guess the way it's oriented, the way I'm looking at it, you have five cars lined up, so that would be your, that would be the repair facility or the service bay. And then the little four cars, that's the showroom?
Yeah, that's correct.
Alright, great. Yeah, thank you. That's it for me for now. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions from members? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fred had made a comment. Just, are you allowed to use the same building with two different addresses with the motor vehicles department? Or is that allowed?
Uh, yes, as long as the both portions of the building satisfy their requirements, there's no problem with them being under one roof.
Okay, so the motor vehicle department or the authority has no issues with the way it's set up?
No, no, not at all. As long, like I said, as long as we fulfill their requirements, meaning, you know, separate entrance, separate overhead door, an office, enough space to have cars to be seen and a lift. So as long as, as long as all those requirements could fit in that space, you could have, you could have multiple under one roof.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, last chance, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple more. Now, I did see some, in one of the standard documentation that we received, the dumpster is going to be located where and how would you cover that so it's not like an eyesore? If it's towards the front or the back?
So it currently is, uh, they're, the way they have it set up currently is they have almost like transport containers attached to the building. And they're going to be removing those as they move out. So they, there currently isn't a dumpster at the location. But what I'll be doing is in that southeast corner of the property, I'll be fencing in just a single small dumpster. Again, you know, the smallest I could have that will, that will fulfill the DOT needs. And that could be fully enclosed with the top on it, you know, if needed.
And is there, the second part of my question, is there a certain kind of exhaust system that you have to use? If, you know, when you start the cars to make sure it's running right when you're doing repairs, is there a standard of certain kind of exhaust system that is installed into the building?
Um, not by state law. That's more of an OSHA control issue. And considering what they recommend for a building this size and the amount of volume that I'll be doing, it's not going to be necessary.
Okay. Okay. Anything, any further questions from members? If not, we'll take a motion to close this, this application.
A motion.
Motion closing, Mr. Francis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I think that's Mr. Vigliati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Next one, and this is probably going to be fairly straightforward, but we'll call it separately anyway. 24 Lines Place petition of Rosa Linea LLC seeking a site plan review and approval of location to establish a used car dealer license in a CA/RM1 zone. So I guess you're speaking to that one as well, Mr. Repasi?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I can see that, I was looking at the, you're right, the two buildings look like they are practically glued together and the site plans that we had, you know, indicate how they are connected. So I guess, let me just take a look at the staff comments here if there was anything different. I think they're pretty much exactly the same.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jay Hibansky. The changes are material, really. It's the separate licenses and the separate addresses. All the comments I have are the same. Thank you.
Okay. So last chance, any further questions? Otherwise, we'll just take a quick motion to close this one out too. Okay. Can we do the same thing, Mr. Francis? And make a motion to close, please?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay, second?
Mr. Vigliati, second.
Vigliati, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, carries unanimously. And we are out of our public hearing at 7:20. And just give me one second to reset here and we'll move right into our administrative session. Okay. Alright, we'll call the administrative session to order at 7:20 PM as well. Mr. Henrik, why don't we take both of those together off the table? Someone, can you make a motion, please?
Sure, I make a motion to take 1701 Stratford Ave. and 24 Lines Place off the table.
Okay, motion by Mr. Henrik to take 1701 Stratford and 24 Lines off the, off the table. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Mr. Bacola.
Second, Mr. Bacola. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, your pleasure commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 1701 Stratford Ave. petition of Repasi Motor Works LLC seeking a site plan review and approval of location to establish a general repairs license in the CA/RM1 zone.
Okay, motion by Mr. Henrik to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bacola.
Second, Mr. Bacola. Okay, discussion.
I would make that motion to include all the standard motor vehicle stipulations.
Okay. Just my notes. Okay, so the motion will include all standard stipulations. Anything else, Mr. Henrik, while we, we got that?
Do we want to include in the repairs to the front or we just take it under assumption that it'll be done?
If we're talking about commercial, does architectural review board get involved in something like this? In terms of the, you know, because of that, you know, wherever it is in the neighborhood and the street it's on and all the surrounding businesses?
Mr. Hibansky, I'll let you answer that question.
Jay Hibansky here. So we had this discussion with the applicant and, you know, the applicant expressed interest in improving the facade. However, I think just financially, they weren't prepared to make those, make those changes upfront. Therefore, they were not required to go to the architectural review board. If there were facade improvements that were being proposed with this application, they would have, they would have gone to the architectural review board prior. So that's, that's a part of the reason why I felt my staff comments paid a bit more attention to some of the facade improvements if the commission decided that they wanted to entertain any of those.
I think we could probably do is let's mitigate anything that is, that is rotting or in disrepair. Maybe not even necessarily say improve, but anything that needs attention, if we can make that as a condition, I think that would, that would take care of the immediate issue. And then if there's anything that, you know, later on, that's contemplated as a more, a larger scale revision of it, we could take, they can take care of that with the ARB. Would that make sense?
Sure. So do you want me to make another motion? Or do you want to just include that into mine?
Let's just make, let me, I didn't really get through your whole thing, Mike, so why don't you just make one with those two stipulations, the standards and then the, the standard steps? And then remove any rotten, damaged or?
Peeling paint.
Peeling paint, anything that is in disrepair in the facade.
Okay, so I would withdraw my original motion and make a new motion for approval. The approvals would include the standard motor vehicle stipulations and the repairs to the front facade of the building, whether it be rotten boards or dilapidated paint to be completed.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Francis, further discussion. Mr. Hibansky, I thought I saw your hand go up. No?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Just as far as debate, I, this looks fairly straightforward. Looks like this is continuing the type of use that is quite common in that area. I think with, given the buildings some additional care, it can continue to operate within the area, as I mentioned in my comments earlier during the meeting, that, you know, that is frequented by people from town because of the restaurants, the car wash and the brewery in that neighborhood. So I think it looks like it would be a complimentary addition to it, so I would, I would recommend approval. Any other comments from members?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Henrik, I would agree to you based, it sounds like that the style of car and the type of business would almost require a nicer, nicer facade, a nicer look to the building to attract the type of clientele I think he's looking to attract. So I think it would be only in his best interest to make those improvements. And it seems to be a good fit. It's a low impact on the area. There's no big traffic. So it seems like they'll, they'll be going, and to Mr. Francis's point, I think you might probably have to go to, you know, through the whole process with the building department and the fire marshals if they needed some type of a fire fan system or whatever it might be. So I would make, I would agree with you that it seems to be a good fit and I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Other comments or debate from members?
I just think it's a good fit for the empty space. You know, I think it's a really good use of the space that we have there that's vacant and empty. So, yeah, I'm excited to have more use of the empty properties that are there in the district.
Okay. Last chance, any other comments? If not?
Oh, yeah, and I also agree. I think it'll be a confidence for the area. Yeah. And basically, that area is, you know, the VIPs right there which deals with cars. I mean, it's two roads right across the street, Pizza Co.'s right there. So I think it'll be a benefit to have somebody in that complex doing something positive. So I think it's a, it's a good, good idea and I agree.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henrik?
Make a motion to approve 24 Lines Place petition of Rosa Linea LLC seeking a site plan review and approval of location to establish used car dealership, dealer license in a CA/RM1 zone. I'd make my motion to approve the, to include the standard motor vehicle stipulations. And since it is a part of the building of 1701, to include the repairs to the front facade, equivalent to those of the last application.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Henrik to approve 24 Lines Place with the standard motor vehicle stipulations and the stipulated repairs to anything that is damaged or rotten in the facade as previously done with 1701. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bacola.
Second by Mr. Bacola. He jumped you. Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Mike Henrik, as with the, with the previous application, it's, since it's in, basically within the same building, part of an equal piece of it, I would say for all the same reasons that we approved the last, that this would fit under. And again, I was going to kind of joke around and say it would be crazy to approve it to see if I could get a reaction out of Mr. Francis.
He seems very intent right now. I can see that.
I think, again, it's, it'll, I think it'll all work well. It'll be harmonious in the area, so.
Be kind of silly to approve half the building and not the other one, I'm saying. Yeah, so I think it makes sense. So I'll be voting yes on this one. Any further discussion, members? Or you can just say ditto, ditto, you know, that'd work. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. You're all set, sir. Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Have a good evening. Best of luck to you too.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate everything. And so just one quick question before I jump off. In regards to those improvements on the facade, how does that, so that I need to do them before it's approved? Or it's just approved and then that's expected of me right after?
It's approved and that's part of the condition of approval. So just, you know, see to it anything that is, you know, broken, dilapidated, broken, rotten, peeling is done and that's part of the condition of approval.
Okay, alright, thank you. That would be a follow-up. I really appreciate everything, guys. And if you're ever in the area, I hope you, I hope you stop by. I need two or three months to get, to get the building up and operating. And shortly after that, it should be a pretty interesting place to come in and walk around and check out some cool cars.
I'll do that.
I was looking forward to seeing you guys and you ladies. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, moving ahead in the agenda, approval of the. Okay, moving ahead in the agenda, approval of the minutes of the March twenty?
You got it, go ahead.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Francis, uh, second by Mr. Henrik. I heard both of you guys together. Uh, any corrections, changes, revisions, anything out of place? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Okay, uh, camp site plan review, anything, Jay?
No.
Very good. Uh, zoning enforcement, do we have any complaints from any members? Any issues that we should address? Guess not?
I, I have one question.
Sure thing, go ahead.
So like Shakespeare Market, there are people who go there and they sell baked goods and they have things on their cookies saying that they're from a cottage kitchen. Is, I, I, is that a thing? Like, I mean, I don't know, like if you're, if you're producing food and selling it, do, do you need any kind of health inspection or? I mean, I certainly don't want to confront the person there or, you know, but I'm just, I, you know, it was just something I, I thought of and I don't know what the answer. I don't know how that falls. Is that a self-definition calling themselves a cottage kitchen or is that like a thing?
Mr. Abansky, I'll yield to you because I'm not sure myself.
Jay Abansky, yes, that, that is a thing. Um, so I believe it was a year ago, the, the state of Connecticut has basically allowed for, uh, cottage kitchen licenses where to allow for, I mean, they call it artisanal manufacturing. You know, if I wanted to start a small cookie business out of my home, um, I would get approval from the, uh, local health department. You know, there's no selling out of the home. It's done in things like farmers markets and, um, you know, there's no retail allowed. And, um, with, once the health, health department approves, they can go and get their cottage food license with the state of Connecticut. So, yep, that's a thing.
And, and, and so with that, with the, uh, health department requirements, they would be different than a commercial kitchen or, or something like that?
Hey, I'm not sure, to be totally honest. Um, I'm not sure what the requirements are. I know that basically as long as it's in a, I believe, a, a one-family home, um, it's, it's basically permitted as of right. And, um, you know, the, the local zoning departments don't have much say in it. I think if you start expanding to a commercial kitchen and you're, you know, getting shipments to the house and there, there's a, there's a list of criteria that basically make it, uh, really for only mom and pop type, type, um, you know, food businesses. I know there's a, there's a few in town. Another one, they make, um, uh, dog treats. Uh, I can't remember what the other one, maybe pickles. So, that's as much as I know about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the, uh, the Shakespeare Market, that's, if you haven't seen that, that's quite a, quite an operation they have down there. And, uh, we'll just have to keep an eye on that. If it's, it gets much bigger, I don't know how much that's going to cause any issues, but I mean, it seems like it's well-run right now, but I know that there's a lot of, a lot of cars and a lot of people there. So hopefully things keep working very smoothly and my, and kudos go out to, um, volunteers or staff or police, everybody that keeps it orderly. So I was down there a few weeks ago, so it was quite an interesting thing to see. Okay. Um, any accessory apartment applications, Jay?
No.
No. And while we're on that, just a heads up, um, that we're, we're waiting to see, thank you all again for, um, your support of the resolution on local zoning and one issue that, and the, um, uh, the housing plan, one issue that was in there actually was dealing with, with accessory apartments. And just as an FYI, um, we may actually take up, take a look at some of our accessory regulations. We've, uh, actually the town planner had sent me to review a couple, uh, regulations that some of our neighboring towns have. Uh, I have nothing for you right now, but, uh, we may, assuming that the plan gets adopted, uh, we may actually take a look at some of, uh, take a hard look at some of our regulations and see if they're working, if they need any, uh, improvements. Uh, you know, perhaps, uh, you know, during the summer when things get a little, typically get a little slow and we have a little downtime to do some work. So just an FYI on that. Okay, any sentiment or erosion control?
No, nothing this month.
And anything from our friends at the planning commission?
No updates.
No updates, good. Okay, item eight, we have, we actually have another item to talk about. Um, Jay and I had a conversation this morning, uh, regarding the governor's executive order regarding remote meetings is due to expire next month. Uh, so Jay, I'm going to turn it over to you and you can walk us through it. And, um, we're gonna need to understand what commissioners' preferences are for how we're gonna move forward come next month. So, Jay?
Okay, thank you, Jay Abansky. So, um, last year, the, the governor, uh, made a series of executive orders that, that allowed us to, uh, have meetings in, in this, these virtual formats and changed the way that we were advertising, uh, by posting things on the, on the website, including our agendas and notices, uh, as well as applications and staff comments. Um, during that time, um, during that time, we, we changed a lot of the way that we did things in the office. You know, typically we were, um, you know, when an application came in for, uh, let's say this lines place in seventeen oh one Stratford Avenue. That gentleman would have had to made, uh, thirteen sets of his application, uh, thirteen sets of his survey and floor plans and, um, supporting documentation. And, uh, I mean, I've seen some of the bills that these folks had and, you know, they can be anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars. Those, those big plans, those are expensive. Um, and so, uh, um, as, uh, Chris mentioned, on May twentieth, the executive orders are set to expire. Uh, I, I don't know if there's any intention of extending, uh, the executive order to allow meetings like this to happen or the way we advertise or how we're posting meetings. But, um, you know, Chris and I had a conversation and that's, that's another issue. I mean, I think we have to talk about a few things. One is if the executive order does expire, we all have to be, uh, prepared to start coming to meetings. And that's as early as next month. And my office is preparing to advertise in the newspaper, um, next month and to have an in-person meeting in council chambers on, I think it's May twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, I, the last executive order was extended, uh, at, at the eleventh hour and fifty-ninth minute. So that may happen again and, um, you know, I think, so one thing you're gonna have to think about is what we're gonna be doing with these meetings. Is everyone comfortable coming in? Um, can everyone hear me? I'm getting feedback on my, my device.
No, you're loud and clear.
Okay, good. So, so, um, you know, we're, we're asking the planning commission this very same question, uh, as well as the zoning board of appeals and the architectural review board, you know, what everybody's comfort level is. And it, and the, the big thing for me is we want to make sure that we're, we are all heading in the same path together. All the boards are either meeting, uh, virtually or they're meeting, um, uh, at town hall. And, um, it's just, it's, it's too much to coordinate to have different boards doing different things. So I want, I wanted to make sure that the board, uh, zoning commission was at least thinking about that. So additionally, so as opposed to taking the thirteen sets of copies, we now require applicants under COVID to submit one paper copy of their entire application that we keep on file in the planning and zoning office. And then one digital copy on a flash drive that then I take, I will upload to the website and you all have been seeing how you're, you know, that's how we've been reviewing applications. Um, and they're not only available to the commission, but they're also available to the general public. Uh, you know, prior to me starting here, uh, I think applications, just the application themselves were sent out to commissioners. And if you wanted to look at plans, you had to come in to town hall. I didn't love that system. Um, and, uh, so we started requiring, I started requiring applicants to, to make full sets of copies for all the commissioners to review. So you, you didn't have to spend your volunteer time coming into town hall and you, you, you just had them delivered to your house. You could review and we wanted it to be as easy as possible for all of you. You know, and, and, you know, Chris and I were talking a little bit about, you know, it would be a shame to waste an opportunity, um, to maybe consider some changes and think about, you know, you know, now that we're going back, what, or with the possibility of going back, what do we want to go back to? And, you know, I think some people have really enjoyed, uh, the less paper, the less clutter, the bags waiting for them on their front porch. Um, you know, carrying it all to town hall, trying to keep it all organized. Um, and, you know, I think some people are used to that and they, and they like having the paper around and looking at the paper at the meeting. And, um, it was always a goal of mine to do something similar to this long before the pandemic. One, because I think it's just a terrible waste of paper and ink and that's awfully expensive cost to pass on to people who are making applications. Um, but, uh, you know, I also think that, um, having everything posted online is a really great tool, not only for you, but I think for the general public to understand what is happening. Uh, they can look at everything that you're looking at or that we're looking at. Um, and, um, so we just wanted to see what people thought, you know? Did people kind of enjoy the way that we were doing things? Do they absolutely hate it? Um, one way or another, we kind of have to make a decision because it's, it's more work for me to put everything up on the website. I'll just say it's super easy for me to pass the cost on to the applicant and just say, you know, spend a thousand dollars on copies and that's just the easy way to do it and I don't have to do anything. Um, however, I think, like I said, thinking about, thinking about what we want to go back to, I think some of these things are a little bit better. And I would be willing to do the extra work if it's something that the commission was interested in me continuing to do. I think it's a better system, but you all are the ones making the decisions as well. And, you know, this, this way just isn't working for me. You know, we, we want to know so that we can have all the boards collectively doing the same thing. I, I just can't do both. It's too much work to, to do that and get paper copies and making sure everybody's getting all their paper in. And it's just, it would be too much to manage. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, with that, with that kind of history and background, I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, so I guess the first question here is, um, let's assume for the moment that, uh, well, if the, um, if the executive order expires is not renewed, then remote meetings are not an option. I guess we have to be back in town hall. Um, so, oh, Attorney Sullivan, would you like to, Chairman?
I, I just wanted to just give you some information. I think one of the reasons there was the last minute extension of this executive order is that the legislature is supposed to be discussing passing, you know, new legislation that would allow, you know, different things. So I realize it's totally chaotic and in flux and people are scheduling meetings like, you know, a month from now. And so you can't just sort of wake up one day and say, what are we gonna do? But I do think that that's sort of in the works. This is a, this is an FYI.
Okay, well, let's just say, so let's just say for example that they don't. You know, are members willing to come back to town hall and have these meetings? Or would there have to be, have to, because if they're not, then we have to come up with another accommodation, either God help us, something outside or something like that. But, you know, um, and then the question is if we still have the freedom to do it this remote, do you have a preference for that? Do you want to do, you know, if we have the ability to go, you know, to do one or the other, do you want to stay remote for the foreseeable future? And then the third question is, uh, the delivery of materials. And, uh, Jay and I, when we were talking, I was telling him, I, I can't always see what everybody else is doing, but just for example, I have to have two screens on here because, um, I'm looking at you guys through, uh, my iPad. This is my old, uh, Kindle, so I have all the documents that come up here so I can follow along. And I know Mike likes to take all of his, his, uh, his paperwork home at the end of the meeting, you know, and, and keep it in files and so on. Um, but, uh, you know, everybody has their, their, their own way of, their own way of doing it. I'm being sarcastic, Mike. So those are the three questions that we got to ask. So I'll open up to the floor and you guys tell me what, what you think.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I, I am a strong proponent of real meetings. Um, I always have been. I, I, I think most of us have been vaccinated, you know, um, whether we had to wear masks or not, I mean, I would, I would be in favor of not wearing them. But if we were mandated to wear a mask, have a real meeting, I'm wearing a mask and going to a real meeting. If they gave me the choice, I'd leave my mask at home. Um, I'm, I'm kind of on the same page as you though, as far as, I think it's great information, informationally, that's a word, but for the public to have access to some of the stuff that we look at. Um, but, but if we meet in person, I don't know that I'll have the ability to, you know, I have I have a screen as well, so scanning back and forth between looking at the documents and, and, you know, some of my print up of full-page, you know, blueprints. And some of those are a little more difficult, which if I had to, I could, but, um, I would like to have a copy during some of these meetings. Some of them we don't need, but I don't know how you distinguish what is and what isn't. But, you know, to help follow along, some of them it is, is more helpful to have a paper copy unless, unless the towns are gonna provide us with the laptops and we can scroll back and forth. But, um, anyway, that's, but I would love to have a real meeting.
Yeah, I would too. It's been a long time. I miss, I miss the council chambers. Mr. Figliati, I think you're next on my screen. Any thoughts?
I, I'd be in favor of going back to meeting at council chambers. Um, I think, uh, for the time being, if we all wear masks, probably a good idea. Um, and, you know, I, I think that also I agree that, uh, electronic delivery, you know, saves a lot of trees, saves a lot of ink. Um, and then maybe if we have a couple of hard copies available, uh, during the meeting session, when the meeting's in session, you know, so we could look at, you know, some of the, the drawings or whatever. I think, you know, that seems like it should be workable.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that would work because I'm, I was actually thinking about this after we talked. We probably will, if we went back into the chamber, we'd probably spread out a bit. So me in the middle, two and two on each wing, as opposed to how we used to sit all the way together, just so that we're spread out a little bit more. And maybe we could have like one set for each side that two members could share. That might be a compromise to get through that too. Uh, Mr. Francis? And you're on mute.
There we go. Yeah, I don't know. I just got dropped for some reason, but I, so I didn't, I missed everything you guys were talking about. I mean, I, like, uh, Mr. Hendrick said, I mean, I'm kind of a proponent of being in chambers, um, having people come in. But I also feel it, it's easier and more accessible for the documents and stuff to be online on our website. Um, because as long as we can, I can bring my iPad to, to the, uh, to the, uh, meetings, I'm fine within, and within the council. Cause I'll just reference the, the documentation on my iPad. I'm sure we got Wi-Fi.
If we don't, we'll make sure we do. Yep. Uh, Mr. Bacola?
Yeah, I don't have a problem going back. Um, and I like your idea, you know, maybe spacing us out that way and, and giving us some paperwork on some of the bigger applications that we could review. It would be helpful, so I have no problem.
Okay, cool. All right, Jay?
Okay, so just a few things. I mean, I would be, uh, happy to provide, you know, for, for substantial or complicated application, I'd be happy to make sure that, ask the applicant to provide, you know, maybe five. I mean, I would even say for a big application, you know, we just get one for every commissioner. But, um, and I would, but I would say that for a majority of our applications, we probably would just keep everything online. But that's, I mean, you all would need a device, you would have to have a device in order for that to work. I mean, someone, you'd have to either have a laptop. The town hall has Wi-Fi. You know, we've got, um, a couple hundred people on Wi-Fi every day there all day. Uh, I, you know, at the time of our meetings, I think it would be if, if everyone had a laptop or here's what I would say, if, maybe if not everybody had a laptop, I could look into, uh, maybe purchasing or, uh, getting something for even, you know, it's not necessarily in our budget, but find, find some money to buy one or two. Um, I could bring an extra device, my extra device. I think, uh, the town, our zoning enforcement officer might have an extra one. But we would, in order to make it kind of work, everyone would kind of need something to work off of. So, um, you know, I understand that's a lot to ask. So, um, I think that's really kind of part of this discussion too. Um, yeah.
Yeah, or, I mean, if, if they're up there in advance and if somebody wants to bring it, print it out at home and bring it with them, I mean, that sort of means you have to spend a little time prep. If there's, uh, something you know that's going to be controversial, then obviously we can make sure we allow, I mean, like tonight's meeting, for example, I don't think we would have needed printouts. Um, uh, you know, because the, these were fairly straightforward, uh, if you had the device to be able to look at them, you know. That's the qualification there.
Whereas if, you know, the Christchurch application, clearly we, all the commissioners would want their own set of plans to kind of run through.
Oh, that one, yeah.
So, so come Monday, who is our zoning enforcement officer? I heard John's retiring.
That's me. So what, what? No, well, I mean, I, I, he's been, he's been, you know, John's been on vacation, using his vacation time for the past two months, so I've been doing my job a, as well as his job while he's been away. Um, and, uh, I will be doing that for the next few weeks until our, we have made an offer and had our offer accepted uh, to a, a new zoning enforcement officer who I believe will be starting in about three weeks. So I got another three weeks to go.
So, so when I get emails from John, it's actually you?
No, those were actually coming from him. If you get an email from me, it's, it's for me. Um, he, so he's been in the past, uh, past a week and a half. Using, he, he, you can't take two weeks vacation or whatever it is, your last two weeks. So he was on vacation for about two months prior and, uh, he's been in the last week and a half, so. Um, he's half day tomorrow and he's off on Friday, so if you want to talk to him, tomorrow morning's the time.
I will call. Wish him well.
Okay. So Jay, just getting back, so I think we have a general consensus that if we have to come back into the, uh, you know, the executive order is not renewed. Uh, where it looks like we have, uh, all five members are willing to, and obviously we'll chat with the alternates, I don't think we have anyone with us tonight. Uh, I think the five regular members are prepared to come back, will probably space ourselves out, probably do masks, especially if we're, we have other people in here. Uh, I get my second shot on Sunday, so by the time that meeting comes up, I'll at least be up, up to speed there. Um, and for delivery, um, I don't know that we're, I think generally we, we like the, um, the, um, online versions, I know Mike, you have a concern. Um, we would probably, maybe we can figure out a way to just have either a, I don't think we need thirteen anymore. Uh, we could probably get by at, at a maximum of, you know, one for each member plus your office, obviously, so six. Um, and we'll probably have to wait and see how this all goes out because if members can get them electronically, we can handle that. Uh, or if we need some things, if there's something specifically printed out, maybe we can make a, a smaller number, especially with plans, so that maybe they can be shared between members.
I mean, whatever, whatever it turns out, we can make work. I mean, and I don't want to say you've got to, you've got to, you know, set up the system just for me, I mean, we're only going to be here till November anyway, so.
January, well, December, January, whatever. Yeah, we, we just run out of meeting in the end of the year anyway.
Yeah, and, and that, that sounds, you know, I hear what everyone's saying. I just want to try to make sure that if I can avoid doing the both, um, we can, we can avoid doing both. Um, so, you know, if I can do, you know, maybe, yeah, well, we'll have to just continue to think about, continue to think about how we're going to do it and if it's honestly, if it's too complicated, I, and I'm proud that we're at least having this discussion exploring, going, going in another direction. Maybe it doesn't work, maybe we have to go back the other way and use all the paper and, and that just is, that's a part of the, that's what's going to ha, got to happen, so. Um, you know, I'd say people continue to think about it and we can, we can kind of circle back on it next month.
Okay, so we have, so we're at a little bit of a lurch though for the twenty sixth, so that's only six days after, so if they wait to the we have to, how, how do we do that? I mean, we can't say we're meeting in town hall, but we can't say we're meeting online because we don't know where we're going to be.
Yeah, and, and, and Pat, you're welcome to, to chime in. My thought is, I am going to advertise in the paper next month as we would have pre-COVID, which is, um, and I think it's fourteen day, I can't even remember, it goes along. Fourteen or fifteen days prior to the hearing and, and, um, no less than seven. So we advertised twice for three weeks out, I'm sorry, two weeks out, one week out, and then we have the meeting. We're going to advertise like that next month for the zoning commission meeting. Um, and, you know, I'm going to post, I don't think, we don't have any large applications, so I think I'm going to keep the online review of applications the same, at least for next month. Um, and then just kind of see what plays out on the twentieth, if that, if everyone's agreeable to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons, they took the executive orders and they kind of trimmed them down. So they continued some aspects and didn't continue other aspects, and I think they're sort of streamlining it so that the ones that they've kept in, in, you know, sort of, uh, in executive orders, they can either extend those executive orders again or have the legislation in place to I, I think everybody is thinking about how useful it has been to have things online and how, uh, you, you know, it's actually created some access for both commissioners and for the public, you know, so everybody is thinking like, well, should we do hybrid, you know, what should we do? So I think it's still in flux, but I suppose the thing is, if you schedule it as a virtual meeting and then it turns out that on, you know, May nineteenth, they say, okay, no more virtual meetings, you can probably just cancel the meeting and then just, you know, reschedule it in, in, in person on another, on another day, you know, as a, as a special, I mean, depending on what you have on, I mean, I don't if it's, if, if there are things that are critical, um, you know, can certainly think, think more about it, but, um, you know, my expectation is that, is that they, they do understand that they're leaving people in a lurch when you're supposed to you know, at this meeting, you would say, oh, and our next meeting is going to be X, you know, and it's going to be remote, and so without
Maybe you can do something like, you know, this will be at twenty seven, twenty five Main Street unless
Do an indoor.
And or, uh, at go-to meeting, put both of them on there and whichever one happens to be, you know. Yeah, Jay.
Well, there's nothing prohibiting us from having an in-person meeting. So I mean, we could try to just commit, I mean, maybe we just want to commit to the in-person meeting next month and see how that goes, or, um, we, maybe we, you know, check back, you know, maybe Chris and I, we just check back in before I finalize the legal notice and the agenda.
Let's do that.
Um,
Let's see what we're dealing with.
We go from there.
Changes so fast around here, but that's good to know that we still have, that we have the freedom to actually do that. And then, uh, if everybody's still comfortable, then regardless of what happens, we can even do it that way, but let's, let's stay in touch on that and then we get close to the advertising date, we can make a call. Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate your, your, your input on that. Uh, any items for goal settings or any other business before the commission?
Just, and we don't have to get a deep question on it today, it's Mike Hendrick.
Um, yeah.
If, if sometime, maybe at the next meeting or whatever, we can get a report on the, uh, cell, the cell service at, at town hall, Cupola. And, and if that's moving anywhere.
Jay Habansky, um, yeah, I'll check with the C A O. I believe the, the, the inquiry from the zoning commission was, or is is the town interested in relocating the, um, cellular equipment to the high school, is that right?
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I believe the last communication I got was, um, let's wait until the building CO'd, and so I believe we're CO-ing it, uh, this week. It might even happen tomorrow, so that'll be a timely, um, time for me to reach out and just kind of re-engage them, so that's.
Thanks.
Okay, well, then as stated previously, our next meeting is May twenty sixth. Looks like we already canceled the admin session according to this. Um, okay, oh, yes, it is, because we have a training going on that night. Um, especially for, uh, Mr. Francis and, um, Mr. Figliotti, since you'll be continuing. Um, and for any of our alternates or any, actually anybody that wants to come, uh, please, uh, make avail yourself of that.
And you'd have to send me an email to let me know, uh, because there's some information that's going to be going out ahead of time to everyone that's attending. So please let me know if you're going to be attending. Thanks.
Very good. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mike Hendrick.
I mean, we can stay here all, as long as you like, okay? Second, Mr. Big, Big Liotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or is no, carries unanimously, we're adjourned at eight P M. and hopefully we'll see everybody in the flesh next week, next month. Take care. Bye-bye, everyone.
Good night.